So we will get started tonight, a call to order at half five thirty-one minute late, bad start to the school year. So we'll get started for our September Amherst School Board meeting. We will start off with our public comment session. We do not have any public comment here right now, any uh, any people here to make public comment. So you may notice we are in a new setting. Our Amherst School Board meetings will be in the Amherst Middle School Library. Uh, we also have a new um, system of sharing the agenda. So hopefully everybody got that and gets acclimated to it, both board members and the public. But all of our meetings for Amherst School Board will be in this building, in this library. Gets us a chance to see other facilities and a little bit of a change of scenery because we will go back to learning comments next week for the SAU meeting. So. We have Superintendent Mike Berry and our Business Administrator Amy Facy with us, and then Brian Miller is filling in for Steve Chamberlain tonight as our technical guru. Which I'm not sure anybody has ever said uh, that those words together for Steve. But is uh, we do wish Steve well. He's at home convalescing right now, so uh, he's probably watching, I would imagine as well on Zoom. So we give him a shout out and wish him well. Uh, as we move on to our consent agenda tonight, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, which included the minutes from our board retreat on July ninth. And then three donations, unanticipated revenue, one from the Amherst Women's Junior Fund, one from the Cruz Bochamp Family, and then any kind donation from Sun Valley Bars. Uh, two of those will go to middle AMS, and then the last one will go to Clark Wilkins.
I want to pull the minutes off the.
You want to pull the minutes off the consent agenda. So I will have a motion to, let's go approve two, three, and four then in the consent agenda. And then we can talk about pulling uh, the minutes there and just give the reasonings why. So we have a basis for that. So. Can I get a uh, motion to approve two, three, and four on the consent agenda, the unanticipated revenue items?
Make that motion.
I get a motion from Jason. Can I get a second? I have a second for Terry. Sorry, Terry, I didn't see you down there.
That's good.
Uh, any conversation on those items?
Just a big thank you to those uh, organizations and individuals who.
Almost eighteen hundred dollars going to the schools, and anytime we get something like that, it's always greatly appreciated for both curriculum and extracurriculars and different activities for students and staff. So. With that, I will call the votes and all in favor. One, two, three, four, five, none opposed. So we have passed two, three, and four, and then Greg, you wanted to pull um, number one. Uh, you want to give us the reasonings why?
Yeah, thanks. So the minutes of from the July nine board retreat, and there were, there was one topic that I noticed wasn't in the minutes that I thought was. A good discussion should be in the minutes, and there was another one that I thought needed a little more um, detail to show the kind of analysis we did. And the third objection is the data potential should be attached. So during that meeting. We had a data presentation by the superintendent, and that data was not attached. And then one of the discussion points we had. We, we showed how the, I think it was third grade, I came into the third or fourth grade, I tried to go back, but I believe this third grade. Uh, we're growing more than the average D W A school, and yet they were still below the average newest uh, class performance. And we mentioned, I mentioned that this suggests the students are falling behind the newer average classes before third grade, and then we should analyze the earlier years. With the goal of identifying where the students are first reported behind the newest students. And I think that would be a worthy thing to come out of our retreat that wasn't in the minutes.
Okay, with those two, and those were the two items.
One more item, yeah. Um, at the end of the meeting, we had a longer discussion, I thought about um, I thought was worthy, all about the uh, teachers taking time off. And I couldn't recall all the people that were um, speaking about that. Um, but that was worth. Recording those, those minutes. I have my own paragraph I captured, but best I can recall, I could say that louder, we could keep these off and um.
I'd say let's keep them off and like share it with um, we share it with the board usually, we do that, or we just share it with the name? It's usually sharing to the board, we review, and then we can vote on it in the next.
We can table it till the next meeting, and there's a recording of the, we recorded our retreat in terms of not remembering who said what. I mean, it's all. It's all there for anybody who wants a verbatim account of the meeting.
Yeah, if you want to share that, Greg, with the board, and we can review that and talk about it for the next uh.
I'd be happy to suggest the edits before the next meeting, and then we can go next time.
Correct, yeah.
Perfect, okay.
Thanks, guys. That just makes it easier in trying to do it all tonight, and then without being able to go back. So we've seen this at the SAU a few times, makes it much easier and much more efficient, so. Um, perfect. So I will put a pause right there. I'm going to go back to our public comment because we, we were. Not a specific agenda item, and I don't necessarily want to wait to the committee reports. We have some other items to discuss, but we, we'll talk about it more as we go through other ASB meetings this year, but. Caitlin Thompson is here from the Ways and Means Committee. They had their first organizational meeting um, this, uh, what's it called, this week? That's the word I was looking for. Um, so Caitlin, if you'd like to come up and if you want to just address the board through public comment, just kind of recap what went on at that meeting. Um, I'll let Jason kind of introduce it because Jason was there as well. There's anything he wants to add, and if you'd like to just give an update on it, just to give us a recap as to where we are at this point. We haven't seen any budgets or anything yet, that'll be coming out next month. But it is good to know if there's any other business you guys talked about um, that you wanted to recap this on. This way you don't have to stay through the, through the end of it if you don't want to.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll start.
Yeah, you want to just, you're up right up in the middle.
No, you're, yeah, you're close enough, you just grab one there and I'll share it right there, yeah. Yeah, I guess also, I mean, so it was an organizational meeting, Caitlin was the chair. Um, I don't know if we need to go through all the different roles, but again, uh, what everyone got, and then basically what happens, we talked about. Caitlin. Feel free to correct me if I can speak. Kind of the purpose of Ways and Means, we had one new member who just kind of given a general overview of how Ways and Means operates, what the responsibilities of Ways and Means are. Then Amy went through the calendar, and he went through all the different subcommittees for the, for the budget, and then the different. Uh, Ways and Means members were assigned to their different subcommittees. Um, that was, I mean, that was kind of essentially really the bulk of what took place.
Yeah, I think Jason captured it really well. Um, it was just an organizational meeting to get us back together. This was the first one of the season um, in advance of the budget being available to us to review. Uh, we do have one member that he mentioned joining us new to replace Brittany Donovan. She moved out of town over the summer. Um, so Tom Riley is taking her place for this budget season. We also have another alternate that was named Jim Manning uh, has been appointed to the committee as an alternate, so he'll be joining in as needed. We made subcommittee assignments. Everybody understands um, the expectations there. And then we have our next meeting, I believe, before we start the subcommittee meetings. We've started kind of thinking about the agenda for that, which obviously will be posted in advance. One of those things is just to revisit expectations again to make sure, you know. A lot of us are only in our second season, so just making sure we understand. What the goal is with the subcommittee meetings, what our end goal is um, during deliberative and the warrant articles and everything. So that's the plan for now.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add, um, all of the subcommittee members have been assigned and have received expectations to their meetings. Um, I also gave a, uh, an overview of the budget file using this year's template. Um, as a review to just refresh everyone's memory on how it works as far as inputting questions and um, the answers that staff complete. And just all the different tabs that are, are in there. Um, so that was a refresher for the old members and new for um, for the new members. Yeah, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Caitlin. Appreciate your volunteering, your work, and we'll afford other meetings and getting caught up then.
Thanks.
Thank you, Caitlin.
All right, so back to reports received. We had four of them, or I should say four subcategories, facilities, treasurer for June and July, and then the multiple principals report. Uh, principals reports will be handled a little bit differently this year. We will not have reports at every meeting, nor will we have principals at every meeting. Uh, we'll have more reports than appearances, just to give them a bit of a chance to have more of a family life. They work plenty of long hours. No reason to stay unnecessarily for some of our meetings, but they will be at some of the key meetings, and they'll be here in person. Four or five times this year to give us more updates, be able to answer questions. So. As you have questions on these reports, when they get submitted, if you want to send them to me, and I'll filter them through Mike, and we can get them to the principals accordingly. Um, otherwise, we can just review those, and if you have any questions for Mike based on those reports, we can certainly ask those during this time. But other than that, we're trying to just be a little more efficient for principals and, and save some of their family time for family instead of school board. So. Anybody having actually before, anybody have any questions on the reports? We don't need to approve them or anything, but any questions on those, Shannon?
I just have a quick clarification in, in, for my own understanding. The principals will be at every meeting, and we already know the meetings they'll be at. I forwarded that out to all of you so we can plan accordingly, but we will get a report in each packet. Is that correct? Or will it be someone that we don't have anything?
When the principals are, when the principals are here.
Yeah.
Um, there will not be a principal report.
Because they'll be reporting.
They'll be here.
Understood, okay.
So when they're not here, there will be a principal report.
Okay.
So the, so will they actually, or verbal every month?
Yeah, so when they're not here, like tonight, you got principal reports in your pack.
Written report.
When they are in attendance, there will not be written principal reports. They will review some highlights and then. Verbally when they're in person.
Thanks. That question on the treasury report. And you, you give your answer, Shannon, you're all set.
Oh, yeah, that answers that, uh, yeah.
Okay, uh, Greg. On the, this is kind of high, it's coming later, but I just didn't know if that jacket now, or then so interested now, we can talk about it later if you want. On the July treasure report, there was like five thousand dollars for the A S B A membership. And Amy, I don't know if that's annual fee, or is that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to maybe after we have a discussion later. What after all's that like worth continuing to um, be in, be in that membership or not?
Okay, we, uh.
Yeah, we can talk about that when we get to the delegate sense. Yeah, I think it's worth having the value proposition before we talk about the class, but uh.
Sorry, I just want to write that down so don't forget it. All right, any other questions on reports? Terry?
That's right. This is not terribly conducive. Um, couple, I have a question on the org chart for Clark Wilkins. And as kitchens staff on both, but they don't have kitchen staff at Clark, right? They, they, she works the lunch though, right? Isn't there someone who serves, who does the serving during lunch then?
Correct, they part it over, and it's usually two people.
So they have a staff of four um, and in each building during the lunch hour.
Oh, during the lunch hours.
Yeah, so like they bring the lunch over during lunchtime at Clark, and they, the staff that's housed out of Wilkins works out of Clark during the lunch hour. So the kids can get their food.
So they have four at Clark during lunch then? Because in previous years, that was years ago now that I volunteered, but they did not, it was like six years ago, wow, they uh. They had just volunteered one person and then volunteers to fill the rest of the roles.
I gotta see exactly what num, how many numbers stay at Wilkins, then how many go to Clark. I've never asked that question. I can find that out.
I'm just confused by, by the way it looks on the org chart, that's all. I, I, I understand that it's a shared resource, absolutely, but. But this looks like some are specifically here, specifically there, and that one confused me.
Is it the same four or is it eight?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
That's, we didn't have the people as it was. I was like, where did we magically find four more? Okay, so that's, that's a question on, on that. Um, the comment on the grading and reporting is that I've heard nothing but really positive things from, from families. And parents, and I just really want to um, I will, I will send something myself as well, but I, I wanted. That message to go back, that I appreciate all the work that's been done there, and that I think that it's, it's already making a difference. Um, and really engaging our parents and giving them a better way to interact with our staff, so, and to support their students, which is the whole point, so.
Appreciate, that's been a, uh, a pretty good, pretty good initiative, pretty, pretty heavy lift.
Oh, yeah.
And uh, welcomed by administration teachers and students. So we'll look forward to the continued work on it. Appreciate it.
I mean, I could, I can, I could take a different turn if you want to take a turn, and then I can, I'm just kind of.
I was, I was going to piggyback a little bit on what you said. I've had an opportunity to attend. Three of the three open houses that have taken place in SA thirty-nine over the last two weeks, and particularly here at AMS, I really appreciate. Um, and, and I've heard from others, uh. Principal Gothea and her staff did a really nice job of rolling out the grading and reporting to the parents who attended the open houses. My children are coming home, understanding the grading, telling you about the grading, you know, mom, we're gonna, yeah, this is what the grades are gonna look like, and. Um, they're actually more motivated this year than they have been in previous years to really um. Strive for those grades, so um, it's, it was really an impressive, impressive open houses all the way around, and it wasn't just. Uh, the administrative team talking about the grading in each individual classroom. Um, all the individual teachers were doing the same thing as well, which was really nice to see, and. Uh, one of the best open houses that I've really attended since I've been here, so I would just, yeah, kudos, and I go with Terry's end.
Excellent.
No, that's awesome. Um, I wanted to acknowledge some of the summer work. I was really excited to see like the story time over the summer. And some of the other ways that we were able to stay engaged. I know that we did um, here at the middle school. The, the summer program did to get the kids ready as well, and I assumed that went as well as it did last year, um, which is why we repeated it. My question, since we don't have principals here, is um, I know that transportation has been its own challenge. Sorry, Amy, I don't mean to bring it up, but otherwise, how has the start gone? I've, I've heard mostly positive facts, but.
Yeah, the start in Amherst has gone, gone really well. I think there's good energy uh, and kind of a. Kind of a togetherness at AMS right now that, that you can feel, and uh, I think they, you know, did a lot of work over the summer to get ready for the opening, and. You can see it reflected in some of the systems and procedures that they had in place, and you can see how the teachers are welcoming and receiving kids and then, and the kids experience at Clark Wilkins. Uh, you know, they always historically have done a, a very nice job from Anna to Kathleen and, and with that administration and those teachers getting the building open and, and, and ready. Uh, so it's a real high, high quality start to the year. Um, some really good momentum, and, and as we know, we're, we're, we're struggling. With transportation right now. Um, it's well documented, and uh, and it, it is impacting, you know, experiences of. Of students and families, and it is impacting instructional time. Uh, so it is a, a priority of the SAU to, to try to remedy that. And uh, we've taken some extreme steps this week to try to, to improve the situation. And uh, there'll be more information on that, short term, medium term, and long term regarding transportation.
I just want to say thank you for um, the communication both with us and with the community. I feel like. We're not alone in this challenge, right? We, we know there's like a nationwide uh, driver shortage, and to the point where in the last two years, I mean, there've been. Um, National Guardsmen deploy to be bus drivers in school districts. There's just, it's a problem. And so we're not immune from things that, that affect all communities. Uh, we certainly tried to be proactive, and we thought we were going to be a little better off than we are, so it's. It's disappointing that it's been quite the change that it has, but, but I do know that you were doing everything beforehand that we thought we could do. And I thank you for, for really addressing it head on, but not just addressing it, communicating, because I think communicating part is really important for people to hear directly for families to know, okay. Here's what we do know, here's what we're working on, here's what we're trying to work toward, and being very transparent about it. Um. Here's how we're, you know, what we're expecting of this company, here's how we're supporting them, here's what we expect from them. I think all of that matters because it's not just hearsay, and it's not just complaining, right? It's like, here are the actual facts. Um, and so I thank you for, for continuing to communicate, and um. Yeah, it's not fantastic, but I think that we're doing everything that we can reasonably do to try and, and improve. And so I look forward to hopefully. Having better things to, to talk about in that regard text fund. Hopefully we'll have made some progress.
Yeah, and I appreciate acknowledging that is a, it's an issue in other places throughout New Hampshire and New England and the country. Um, but I am not going to. To deny or um, or. Not going to deny, or I'm not going to kind of uh, mince words. It's egregiously bad right now. It's egregious that. It's not exceptionally bad, and uh, and so there's lots of factors for that, and we're working as quickly as we can to, to try to remedy this. And uh, more updates hopefully in, in the next seventy-two to ninety-six hours. You know, if we continue to work, so I appreciate it, but you know, we'll just keep plugging away.
And I think last, I just want to acknowledge all the work that facilities did over the summer, as always. Um. It is the time where everybody's kind of out of their way, and they work harder than ever. And I know that I, I've been in the building for one thing or another. Um. And at least two of them over the summer and saw some of our, our team, and especially here at AMS, some of the projects here are the most visible. And so I just want to, to probably thank our entire facilities team for just the amazing work that they did to get ready for students and staff to come back.
Thank you.
Which included the completion of phase two of the roof project as well on time. Under budget, we say that too, Mike, I assume it has to be, right?
You know, I think.
It's gotta be, they didn't come us for any more money, so they got it from somewhere, if they didn't uh, if they didn't go to us.
It can't go over.
No, I'm just kidding. Um, well, part of the roof is now converted, or uh, doesn't exist because there's, we didn't have, we ran it. Just kidding. Uh, but yeah, so thank you for that, and I know Steve worked hard in that this summer with uh, all of you guys to, to make sure that that got done in time for kids to be here. Just after Labor Day and more importantly, more importantly, but just as importantly for teachers to be here the week prior to get ready for uh, opening day, if you will.
Yeah, no, it was a, it was a big lift, Roger and his group and Steve and Amy kind of behind the scenes, you know, supporting that work, so uh. It, when you try to do as much as you, we did, you know, and, and a lot of coordination has to happen. And at the end of the day, you know, people need to get used to, we are going to be refreshing and, and, and doing building projects and restore, you know, renovations. Uh, pretty consistently over the next decade, you know, it's just the reality of our situation, given the, the age of our buildings.
Yeah. Okay, uh, moving on tonight to our first media topic is uh, Amherst School Board goals. We had drafted these a while back now, actually. We had time to finalize those um, and, and just send them out to everybody, so we. Bucketed them into a couple of different categories. I'll give the high level summary, and if anybody wants to make any comments, but I think tonight was, we've had the time to review these. They're in the final draft status, or what is tentative final draft status. Ideally tonight, we take a motion to, to approve these and then begin to work to actually fulfill these goals throughout the year. I know sometimes these. Uh, not get put aside, but maybe there's not as much focus on it, but I think it'd be beneficial to. Revisit them, if not every meeting, but base a lot of our meetings and our agenda items on this, and in the framework of progress to make sure that we're focusing our meetings on these items. Uh, to be able to hit these goals, whether we explicitly say this goal is achieved, or we know that that's what we're working towards. So. Uh, academic goals, working with the district to support the literacy and mathematics program. A lot of data will be presented to us for this. Impacts of new curriculum, annual comprehensive uh, presentations on the measurements related to student achievement and growth. Using all the different metrics that we have there, and in the assessment data, um, sharing with the community as well as uh, sharing with the board. Instructional time, focusing on this, uh, stressing the importance of instructional time, uh, how we value that both as a board and as a community. And then looking at that, how we can continue to grow instructional time through better use of the schedules that we have, but also through policy and through future negotiations. Uh, and then using metrics to back up, you know, how that instructional time is being utilized and the impact that it's having on kids. Uh, presenting a comprehensive facilities plan, which will include obviously the elementary school project and the requisite materials that go along with that. Uh, construction and financing plans for the remaining phases of the roof project for the building that we're in, and then making sure that our capital needs assessment, C I P. That matches some of the funding mechanisms we have in place, such as unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, making sure that we have that plan updated. And then we have funds going into uh, rainy day funds to be able to, to fund projects like the roof project. And then also looking at that long-term portable classroom repair and replacement plan. And then lastly, just continuing to, to build the community partnerships, um, really defining what an effective school district is. I think that there's going to be work done across SAU thirty-nine. We're going to talk about this next week in the SAU meeting, but really working on that strategic plan, district-wide, how that impacts Amherst. And then working more with the uh, the other organizations in town, select, planning, zoning, all these other, and, and then non-elected uh, departments as well. Historic commission, different things like that, to make sure that we're all working as one town in any projects we're doing, or, or lining it for the town, getting the town's feedback on things that we can do better, or sharing feedback on what we're doing with them, so that they're the know. For initiatives that we have, um, good things, and then things that we're working to improve, so that they're aware of it, and ideally having them share that with us. So. Very quick, very high level summary. Uh, does anybody want to make a motion to accept the goals tonight, uh, and then we can discuss where we go from there?
That's a good point, motion. Okay, on, on um, on the facilities.
Yes.
So on this whole project, I recall there, and it's not in here now, but now it says, I mentioned, I mentioned plans for the remaining phases of the, of AMS, and then there's something on. The um, the elementary school, that's similar worded, um, who. Comprehensive communication plan featuring these features. I, but I thought that we had wording in there of the. Discussion previously about that reflects the values of our community. Was that taken out, or was that never the false memory I have?
That phrase is used, I have used it in the framework.
The framework.
Reflection of the values of the community.
Okay.
I think that's where you see that phrase used. Um.
Because to me, that, that shows like the balance of the seesaw that we're going to have a comprehensive construction plan. Within the confines of what we heard from our community, they'll support, and I think. That shows responsible governance, that if we just say, here's the plan again, I think that leaves off of that. Opiesiveness of our situation.
Well, I also think there are two ways to monitor if we're meeting that too, whether it's in the goals or not. Elections and voting, uh, like really it's one way, it's elections, right? Elections of people or. Voting for projects, whether that reflects the community's desires and goals. If there are people that aren't doing that, then they get voted off, and if there are. Projects that people like or don't like, people vote accordingly. To me, that's where you're determining if you're hitting those community values, because. We can talk to a hundred people and we're going to get a hundred different opinions on this.
That's right. I guess what I'm saying is putting, putting it in here, saying we want to reflect. The will that we've heard from those elections and not ignore them, and not say, well, we're. We're gonna just do what we think is best because we don't care what the old voters say.
Yeah, but I think even on the board, Jason, five of us here, you're getting five different opinions on what, god dang it, I'm sorry. Uh, Greg, you're going to get five different opinions.
It's, I'll do, I won't be the only one, they'll all be five different opinions.
Uh, you're going to get five different opinions from the five of us as to what those results mean, you know, and, and we're all going to interpret that differently. So to me. The simpler these are, the better. I feel like things like that are eye wash, um, and I'm not a big fan of eye wash. If, if it's not going to provide any substance to it, then. I, I don't know what we're doing. I think all of us are dedicated in our work to make sure that we're presenting things. We're not trying to prove, for, present. A school with a retractable roof over a courtyard, because we all know that that's not in the values of, of anyways, I mean, who, who would do that? So I think. The work that we're doing reflects that, and at any point, any one of us can say, hey, is this really in the best interest of the community, this part of the project, or this aspect of it, but I think it's obvious we need new facilities. And I think that we all have shown that we've been fairly responsible with what we've been asking for and presenting, and, and yeah, we haven't reached those goals yet, but. We've talked about how votes have gone up and, and support has gone up with this, and again, you and I can get into. How you read the results and how I read it, but I think that we're kind of doing that in elections and stuff, show that. I don't know that adding a sentence like that. Does anything but just add a sentence. It's just more words in page, ace. Well, except for I've written. I talked for a long time there, so if you had me at the low.
I'll make a motion to accept the uh, ASB goals.
I'll second.
Good. Any conversation, any other, anything we want to change, Terry?
I will say, I, I agree with them, I'm fine with them, but I really like the way that AMS and, and our Wilkins did theirs, where they said. Here's the goal, here's the action items, here's what we hope to get from that, here are the outcomes. I think that what we're missing is. We kind of mixed our action and outcomes a little bit. And I would like that to be spelled out clear in future. I don't think that we should take the time now to go back, but I would like to in future adopt that same model. I like that model.
Yep.
Yeah, I would support that as a future practice moving forwards, and I think that it would be a good, I like the idea of consistency across the board, right? With the way I was working, the way they work at the school.
Yeah, well, I also, the format, yeah, and I liked how they called out very specifically what part of the framework, like we absolutely said, hey, we're trying to support the framework. But they literally called out, you know, here is the piece of the framework that this goal is supporting. Here's our actions to support it, and then here's what we hope to get of those, of those outcomes. I, I thought it was just really nicely laid out. It helped me understand. So I can judge better what they do, because you know, I can see exactly what their thought process is. So I don't think ours are bad. Don't get me wrong. I think ours are, are fine, but they could be better, and I would like, I would like to learn, benchmark against the fine work that's been done by the administration.
Okay, fair. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll call a vote to accept the goals as presented. All in favor? Five, four, none against. Mike, you want to say something?
Yeah, so I appreciate that. So now that we have schoolwork goes into place, framework, and then the building. Goals, you're going to see us, that they're going to be on the agenda, you know, um, on a regular basis. They're going to be where people can view them. Uh, on, on a regular basis, and you're going to see the principal reports, and as we get further into like uh, some check-ins on and updates on how we are moving. Towards that as we look at the framework and this is building level. Um, so just wanted to let you know how we're, we're implementing those into our work. Um so just wanted to let you know how we're we're implementing those into our work and where you're going to see them again later. So that's it. Thank you.
Are they going to be every time on the agendas or are they going to kind of take turns? I know sometimes we've taken goals and. You'll focus on particular one each month.
I haven't determined that just yet. Great question. But we're going to be consistent between three districts. However, we do it.
Sorry, thanks.
No worries.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah. Uh committee updates. I know we have a policy committee update and a little bit of a discussion about a a secondary policy issue. So I'll. Save that one for last. Anybody else want to go on any committee updates that they have uh from the last two months?
Sure. So uh obviously already gave the ways means one, also C I P. Um we're wrapping up. Amy and Roger presented today to C I P. So they're the last to go. So I. October tenth will be the public hearing for the C I P plan and then it will get presented to the board of selection when they are ready.
And I just would like to publicly thank Jason for carrying the letter on the C I P committee. Um that committee. I I thought it started during the summer when I signed up for it. It's supposed it has historically, it started uh. In September or last week of August and it's at four o'clock, which was a very difficult time for me. So Jason had really represented. Our board and our district on that and grateful. So thank you.
I I mean, yeah, no, I mean, so basically, right, like so the the fire department, the police department, recreation department. The D W they have all and obviously S A thirty nine, those are the departments from. When we heard, um they all present all the projects. Basically, it's five years worth of projects. That they are looking to to get. So I mean, it's everything from getting a ladder truck to the fire department from. You know, the police department saying, well, we're going to, we think we're going to be able to use this grant to complete our communications tower. Uh D P W, you know, saying like, hey, you know, fuel tanks that we use. Are kind of getting old and we're going to need to replace those. Here's the cost for that. Um. So I don't know if there's any particular highlights, but that's that's.
Is that communications tower going to finally improve cell service and?
So there is some hope for that. So the police chief did say that the that they, you know, are trying to reach out to different. Cell phone companies to see if anybody would be interested in partnering in that. And that would, you know. Hurt the cost as well. So I mean, I suggested the provider that I have, but.
Don't worry, they'll share. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Anybody else? Any other updates?
Uh Amherst Building and Grounds, I'm looking back through my notes. We didn't meet as a board in August, right? So. The last time the Building and Grounds Committee met was the first week of August. At that time, we were mostly focused on things to the A M S. Roof project, which was ongoing. Um we all know the results of that. Um and then talking about potential different funding. Uh plans for for the remainder of that project. No recommendations were arrived at, no votes were taken or anything like that. Um the committee requested to have Benwell and D E W attend a future meeting. Um and I believe that's happening this month. We're meeting next week. And my understanding is that meeting was moved from its originally scheduled time to next week um in order for those folks to also attend to. Answer any questions that the committee may have uh of those of those folks. And we welcome Genie Loops. So I'm looking through through notes.
Good question. The sham I just put that there with the meeting, but um. I agree with what you're saying about the Bama D W is coming to the next meeting. And I a little confused because I thought previously we talked about. Trying to engage them to, you know, make significant plan for changes to the plans going forward. I know it's already. Moved toward the same plan is going to be on the the warrant. So um like. Where's the money coming from for us to pay for them to come to me or paying it all for this meeting? I guess my first question. And then like what are we hoping to accomplish with them? At this next meeting.
So I think that the committee was because there, as you know, there's many new members on the committee who aren't familiar with. With those folks or maybe as in, you know, deeply familiar with the plans. Um so my understanding of what the committee was looking for was folks to for them to come through and kind of walk them through some of the specific. Answer their questions. Our motion that we made in June regarding the building was that. We weren't looking for any substantial changes, but if there were minor changes that could be made. Um and then we have an agenda item on our meet on our schedule tonight to discuss how we will be paying those in. Benwell and T E W to re cost the project and and for all that. So meetings such as this would be covered in.
That's a great answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was going to say, we had that coming in a in a in a little bit there right to. Yep, we'll cover that. Um any other? Well, uh committee updates. So policy committee met for the first time this week, uh my first policy meeting, so I won't. Try to summarize too much of it. We looked at a lot of policies that were being finalized from twenty twenty three. Including uh the one we spent the most time on was background checks. And Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, the the point was there to try to. Get background checks for designated volunteers into the same workflow, if you will, as substitutes, get it on that same type of cadence. Because that wasn't specified in that policy. We had already talked about what a designated volunteer is and confirm that. But this was just to confirm, you know, where we want that to go. Uh any other highlights you want to mention from that one before we discuss the masking piece?
No, this was a kickoff to the policy season. So this was our organizational meeting and sort of just kind of. Policy on the policy committee, it's a very, there's a dense amount of work to be done and you're constantly. Trying to keep up with changes that are happening uh to 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 laws. And make sure that we're up to date with that. And then also just looking through all of our policies to make certain that um. We're still executing all those policies, that they still make sense for our district, you know, if anything needs to be changed. So there's a lot of work to do. So. The workflow of policy, we focused on a lot at this meeting, particularly with the transition to assembly. Um from Trello and kind of how that's going to work. And. We spent a lot of time yesterday just discussing where our documents would live. So there's not much to report out on or to vote on in the way of. Particular policies yet, but that will be upcoming.
And and I'll add a change. Uh Danae will be attending policy meetings. And building grounds meetings could take minutes as we move into the twenty three, should be twenty four, twenty five school year. Uh so we appreciate her.
Absolutely. That's a that's a tricky committee too to take. There's just so much to cover.
But I think it's it's valuable to have that because we've seen that there have been uh. Concerns, I wouldn't say issues is not the right word, but it's just difficult to keep. Meetings in either one of the can keep minutes in either one of those meetings because of the content and the the depth of discussion. So. Having Danae there will certainly make it a little more consistent, which is much appreciated. Um Greg, you wanted to talk about the school masking policy, uh or I should say face mask cover, face covering.
Yeah, thanks. Lack thereof, I guess. Um started for our tree in July, on July second. Governor Sunu vetoed House Bill ten ninety three, which would have prohibited mandating face coverings to attend school. The governor wrote in his veto that this decision belongs at local level, so the authority rests with our board. I think a policy is needed for families and children to understand that their child not be denied education in our town because they don't. Wear a face covering at the whim of the superintendent decision. So I'd like to move that we have a policy. Worded that no person should be excluded from denied the benefits of or subject to determination in the district's public schools because their choice. Whether or not to wear a face cover.
Okay. Would this be a your intent to make it a separate policy and add them to a policy or an extra bullet point to a policy that exists already that covers similar things? Or is this a standalone policy you'd like to see?
Uh I think I'm open to putting it inside A C with the last letter K, which is the non discrimination section. Um I'm also open to adding it. It's a new letter, which might be A F, similar to how we did the uh. Uh non discrimination based on handicapped visibility between A C E was not inside A C. I'm okay with either one. Okay.
So I think there are a couple of ways that we can approach this. Um. Number one, we can certainly take up a a motion tonight and discuss this. I think it's also. Uh the other route that I think may be more beneficial and Shannon, you're the policy expert on this in terms of experience. Do we want to do this on our own? And and make sure that it's within R S A's that exists, which it seems that it does. The governor obviously left it up to local control. So I think we have to get confirmation on language, probably have you write that, Greg. I don't think we can vote it tonight, but we can bring it back to. Uh the appropriate people to make sure that this policy is sound and legal. We can develop that and and adopt that on our own. We can also bring it back to policy committee to look at doing something S A U wide and then depending on what happens there, either develop something with the S A U. Or again, go back to doing it on our own as long as it's legal within R S A's.
I think we can pass, we can. I can make, I made the motion. I think there's a second way to happen. And I think we'd pass it tonight with the votes to pass it. And then I think if we need to make changes, we can, but I'd like to see this get passed tonight, not exclude the second reading. And then come back next month, second reading, make modifications as needed and pass it then.
Has there been a second? I didn't.
No, waiting, wait, I made the motion.
We have a, I should have done it first. Do we have a second? I apologize. Terry. Should have a motion, we have a second.
Yeah, are we open to discussion? Great. So House Bill ninety three, which was vetoed vetoed by Governor Sununu. Uh as a violation of local control, I believe Governor Sununu was absolutely on point. Um in vetoing House Bill ninety three, local districts need and should preserve the freedom and flexibility. To determine how best to manage situations as they arise. So for this reason, I wouldn't support what you're recommending. Because on it, on any potential health and safety measures for the simple fact that I don't have a crystal ball into the future of infectious diseases. Or risks. And I think that would tie our hands as to what we're able to do in the local control. That we would maintain in a situation, you know, should it arise and based on what is required and what our constituents and our local population has. I just. I I don't, I don't know why we would do that.
So I'm glad to hear that you're pushing this as a local control issue because I think I can flip your vote. Uh that's what we believe because. By making this policy a policy of the school board, it remains in local control. You can change it. With a new board, new vote, new situation. If if something new comes up, we have a a dust bowl situation in Amherst where face covering that she would make a difference. Uh we can, we can say, yes, we don't want to fill the schools required to wear face masks due to the dust bowl conditions in Amherst. We can do that locally. If we don't um pass this, then there the superintendent is remains able to. Operate with the powers he's already granted. This is this quite clarity and says. You don't need to worry about putting your kids in school here. You're going to be able to go to school without this anti-education. Um you know, prevent prevents people from knowing your classmates' names, prevents you from understanding how to pronunciate words, prevent prevents. Understanding of shy students speaking of understanding class. You know, we had teachers bringing television so that. Students could look at how lips move when you're speaking to learn how to pronunciate words more clearly. I mean, I I don't think it's controversial anymore to say this was the most harmful book and education policy in our district's history. We, you know, we talked about before and after COVID and really is what we mean is this kind of. Um thing happening in our school. So as a pro education person, which I know you are, and a pro control person that you're saying you are. I think you should support this motion as made.
Anybody else have thoughts?
Uh sure. So I I know that it's it's a matter of public record that. When we did have a mask mandate, we had it for a very specific period of time and we were probably guided to us by multiple.
Interrupt you for that, Terry. We did not have it for a specific step time. We went on with that ad nauseam until the superintendent. Went with recommendations. So we never had a set period of time. When I think of specific time, I say we're going to do this for six months and we're going to end it. It just kept going on and on and on. Eventually, the superintendent loosened up the recommendations or recommendations the board voted to to change that. So. I just want to make that clear that there was never a defined.
We didn't define it at the beginning of it, but but again, it was never meant to be a forever thing. It wa- it was, it was at the time we followed, we we made a decision. With recommendations that were given to us at that time for that situation. That time is now different. There are for that particular. Thing that we were addressing and trying to protect our our youngest um students before there there was a vaccination available. Trying to protect our our older and and our at risk um teachers and anybody who was immune or compromised. I am actually okay with putting to rest the fact that we would arbitrarily. Have a mandate and saying, okay, because I do think that there are some families at this point who said, oh, wow. Whether or not you agree that it helped COVID, it actually did cut down on other infectious disease at the time to have more people wearing masks. And so there may be families that for their own choices, they've got something important coming up that's flu in. Whole season and they just want to help avoid some of that, right? And they decide to send their kids to school with a mask. I certainly wouldn't want. Them to feel pressured that they couldn't make that choice for their family, just like we wouldn't pressure others to make a mandate. So I think that. I'm okay with enshrining language that it is family choice at this time. So long as we retain the right to revisit if some new circumstance arose. So I'm okay with enshrining the fact that we're saying, hey, it's up to individual families. Send your kid with, send your kid without, it's your choice. And if we want to enshrine that a policy, I'm I'm comfortable with that. Um I think there are definitely, because there are some districts that have already put a mandate back when they have very high levels in their community. And I certainly don't see us. At, I don't see that happening. I I think there are other, there are other ways to combat it right now beyond that. So I think. I'm not against it for that reason, so long as we have the understanding. That if circumstances changed, we could always go back and we, you know, policies are living, breathing things, right? And so. If there was a different circumstance, we could change it at that time. But if it would put um parents and families' minds at ease at this point, I'm okay with that.
Any thoughts, Jason?
Yeah, I mean, my my big concern is I think it limits our agility, right? Because if it's enshrined in in policy that we're we're never going to do this, how long does it, just think of how long it takes us to change anything in policy. So it. Let's just say some new kind of a chance, but I don't have a crystal ball. I'm not a medical expert and I would. I just think that it limits what we could do. This is like, right, this is my last year. I don't know if I'm going to be, it's not like a thing for. Me, but just like for future boards or future leadership, I I don't want to put something that limits what. Can or can't be done, it's something that will arise.
So Jason, actually, there's um exceptions for emergency situations that you can have uh policy change in one meeting, emergency meeting, you can um. Have the policy read, bypass the second reading and it can be be passed overnight. So if. Something happened um tomorrow that changed all of our minds, we could wait, we could post for a meeting for twenty hours later. We have a meeting on Monday and we could um. And we could uh change it back. So I think um given that that's your direction, I think you could also support this as right as worded.
And and we've also done it where we've waived policies in a meeting as well, where we just said, we're going to waive this policy. We had to do this with a school board nomination thing where we had uh the tip, we did the interviews in non-public, should have done in public, we had. Waived policy number and had a little planning beforehand. We had to talk legal on that, but we were able to waive those. Uh on a, you know, in a short amount of time. So I think again, with emergency stipulations and being able to waive policy, I think that. We again, it's up for a vote the board too. Uh whether or not you waive the policy. So you could have somebody say, no, I don't want to waive this. Take a vote and then you see what the outcome is. So um any other thoughts?
I just, I'm just curious, is there? And I may have missed something, but I haven't gotten any emails. No one's shown up at a meeting and I've yet to hear that anyone's been. Forced to wear a mask or that that's on the horizon. So I'm just curious. What problem exists that we're trying to solve for and why we're.
Thanks. The this is timely and relevant is because this power, I believe this power was evolved from, resided in Concord. Um the governor vetoed House Bill ten ninety three days before our um retreat. I was worried to talk about them, but. It was less high than I thought to get the on the agenda. Um so this is our first meeting really since that uh event. And um I think it it is timely to respond to the. The altercation of the powers that we have to solve this problem at our level. And um but you're right, we're not, I'm not trying, there's no gotcha here. There's nothing that superintendent mission's doing. That this all of a sudden is going to get anybody in trouble. This is, this is a way to put people at rest and say, you're welcome to. You know, move to Amherst with your family, put your children in Amherst schools. We're going to focus on education. We're going to uh not put things like this. That are anti-education as a requirement to attend our school because some other issue. Now, if something else arises and there's another. Um, you know, uh change, we have the ability to to change very rapidly as we already discussed. So I think. Hopefully, and that's why it's relevant now.
I would say that I I, you know, I was in twenty twenty, I served as the chair of the community. I was a community liaison for the reopening task force. Um. No one was trying to do anything that was anti-education at that time. Um I think everyone was trying to do. The best with the information that they had with an ongoing. Um, I think everyone was trying to do the best with the information that they had with an ongoing and evolving. Pandemic. Um, so I, you know, I, again, I just land on. I don't know why we would box ourselves into, we can't do something not knowing. What the future holds. And that's what that does. I mean, you're, you're talking about codifying in policy saying. We won't mask your children, move to Amher, Amherst to know that we aren't going to mask your children. I have no desire to mask children. Not, not anyone else is. But I, I also don't. See that we're doing that and I also, again, can't predict the future. I don't know. Any other districts that are doing these similar policies right now. I haven't. You know, spent a lot of time seeking that out. So maybe, maybe there are.
Would it matter?
But uh, um, I mean, I, I best practice sometimes. It's nice to, to understand some rationale behind things. Sure. I mean. It's not gonna. One way or another, but. Um, I just, to me, it's, it's more. I, I don't know. I just don't understand the, the reason for it right now and I wouldn't want to tie our hands, but I've said that already. So.
Okay, I really appreciate, I just want to say one thing. I really appreciate Terry being, being supportive of this wording. I mean, I think. Of all of us that are sitting here now, I think only Tom and Terry were around for some initial mask. On this committee for mask discussions. And Terry had voted for the mask mandate at the time and then renewed them later on. And I just think it's um, a wonderful sign for our community that someone like Terry can come around and I think it shows. In her own words, that times have changed. And um. I'm glad to work with Terry on this uh, policy.
And so when it comes to this, Shannon, is it? First review, because you're, you said something about. Pushing this to doing first review tonight, voting on it and then coming back and doing a second review and putting in the policy in October. That, is that you?
Okay, do that. That's the standard way. I understand the law, how the law works. I'm not. That familiar with the law. That's why I understood it.
I just want to make sure that's what I understood what you're intent. You did say that. I didn't.
I have to leave that. That's what you heard me say, yes. Is that correct, Tom? Is that how the policy?
I was there for Shannon. Yeah, I gave my first time on.
By proceeding at this, on this board, we bypassed second reading and got it passed immediately. I'm okay not, not bypass.
So I, I think what we need to do, Greg, is we need to get it in writing. So I think if we have that in writing, then.
Well, there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor.
Correct. Yeah, so I'm, uh, so I'm saying. He said, let's. Pass this, but he also said, let's put it into uh, first review. I think if we get it in writing, we can review it and then we can vote to make. A second review and vote to make it policy in the October meeting. I need to have it in writing before we get able to look through this. And I think it's also beneficial for us just to make sure we're not. Uh, screwing up any RSAs and then additionally finding out where to place this policy. Is it best in, like you said, ACK or AFACE?
Who's gonna, who's gonna help with that?
Policy committee can review. Yes. Policy can, that's what the policy.
They, they won't say we can or can't do that. They're just going to help us.
I mean, I used to have some Mike and uh, other people asking, how can I get this done in the, in the policy universe, you know? Um. Are we going to actually have this give through to October or is it some kind of other? Pickup. I mean, school's in session, a lot of homes are for sale. On the way over here, I saw more homes for sale than I realized. You know, I, I just want to make this very clear. So. You know. What needs to be done that's not already done? We have it in writing. I've, I've read it out loud.
I think it's finding out where. Find out where.
I'll say, put it in ACK or under section A. And let's pass it and we can always modify it next month.
This wasn't even on our agenda.
It was on the agenda.
See it in writing.
I, I feel your frustration um, on the agenda. That's why I was confused last time when you introduced the motion to put the. Brooklyn's project back on. It wasn't in the agenda, my implication either. Um, I worked with Tom to get this on the agenda under the committee update.
Correct.
That, that was how Tom wanted to have. So I had a bit of frustration. That I couldn't reach out to everyone to share the wording before the meeting because that would have been a violation of public. Uh, meeting. So I'm doing this the best way that I think is, you know, allowed.
So I think we. Read, uh, read your, the motion is to make this a policy.
Here's the policy as worded.
No, the motion is to, did they have the motion again?
I hear, just what I said. I moved, we had a policy. Those ACK worded, no persons shall be excluded from, denied benefits of, or subjected to the discrimination in the district's public schools. Because of their choice whether or not to wear face covering.
So I think we need to. We have a second on that. I think.
I'll call for a vote.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm trying to think. I want to make sure that this has. The, the due. Chance to pass or to fail appropriately. And I think it needs to have a first review and I think it needs to go to the policy committee to make sure that ACK is the right one. And to make sure that. Wording covers all of the instances that we wanted to, that, that there's not troublesome wording in there.
When's the, when's the next policy coming?
Uh, week and a half.
Before the next, October.
Yeah, before the next October. Okay. So this will be on the October agenda. Okay. We'll, we'll make sure we have that on there. I'll make sure.
Second, that's right, the next.
Yeah, and our next meeting is this.
Should I comment that meeting?
Sure. I mean, any, any chance of.
Uh, are we not allowed if there are?
Okay. But you can submit it.
And we'll review.
And Tom and Shannon can, can bring it forth and they, they can review it and in between, like, I'll look. As superintendent in partnership with the school, uh, school board association. To see where it best aligns, like make a recommendation to the policy committee. Uh, and then from there, it can be brought back here in October. And you guys can decide what you want to do with it. There is an agenda item in October. That's how I would proceed with this.
Yeah, I would, I would say that that would be the way to go. And I'm trying to, we. We, we can modify a motion, we need to vote that down and, or make them, and then make the motion to.
If Greg chooses, he can withdraw the motion.
And then we can make a new one.
And we can make a new one.
Yeah. Would you like to do that?
Mike, I hear what you're saying. That's, I don't know what. You thought I was asking earlier in email, like this is like July. This is, my intention was understanding these processes and on that email. Uh, I'm sorry to understand. Maybe I did it well, but we need, we need to work better together because I wanted to have this. Policy figure out, I put it on a policy committee last week.
Yeah, so we've only had one policy meeting.
Right, but I could have done this already.
You could have, right? And, and, but we're talking three weeks roughly. I mean, a month before we. We come back to it. Policy does take a little bit more time. And usually you are, have a pressing concern when you wave first reads and you, in one night. You know, and so it's not typical that the policy is done this way. I'm not saying it can't be.
That's what I asked you, what is, would it do this?
So i- it was that policy, right? They, 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 I was on the agenda at, at policy. They talked about it and they. They couldn't do anything with it because we didn't have anything writing yet. Because I wanted you to bring here with this board to see if this board wanted to take that policy. And, and so this board voted one to four, then what's the point of bringing it to policy?
If, if bringing it to, having memories, you wouldn't approve it when this board doesn't support it.
So if the board votes four to one in favor, we'll ban it. You can. You know, you can go ahead and, and withdraw it, play, and make, and then make a motion to. Send it to policy. And then we'll bring it to policy. We'll do the work that we said we were going to do.
Approve it as a first read tonight and then bring it to policy. We'll approve, they'll go through and just make sure it's in the right. Right policy. I think we need to have it in writing too, just so we can pass that along to the policy. If you want to forward that to me. Where you want this to go, what the policy language will be. And then we can discuss it policy. And if we think that it's in the right spot, that's great. And if we need to move it to a different. Spot, a different uh, sub-policy or make this a sub-policy, sub-item of a different policy. We can do that. Cause I don't think any of us are experts in here. There may be something else that has a better fit for it. But I think that doing a first read tonight. Going to policy with it, coming back, I mean, as far as Mike is told, he hasn't told me his, any plans to mask everybody before October sixteen. Which is our next meeting.
So, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, I have not made that decision.
Right, alright. So I'll, I'll draw the motion and I'll make the motion that you're. Make a motion to put that policy into ACK as a first read tonight. Uh, and then send it to the policy committee for their next meeting on October second. Okay, do I have a second for that? There.
Yeah, I'm happy to second the amended um, motion.
It's a new motion.
Greg, I apologize. Would you read your, um. Would you read it one more time, please? Your policy.
No persons shall be excluded from, denied the benefits of, or subjected to discrimination in the district's public schools because of their choice of whether or not to wear a face covering. I'll get it to them.
Any further discussion on this?
So all we're doing right now is we both vote to accept policy, approving as a first read and then sending it to policy.
We will call a vote then. All in favor of the first read and sending it to policy, raise your hand. One, two, three, all against. Shannon and Jason. So three to two, it passes. This will go as a first read to the policy now. Policy committee will look at it on October second and we will uh. Make sure it's in the right spots and we'll bring it back for final vote in a second read on. Between October sixteenth or nineteenth. In our October meeting. Uh, I just had it here a second ago. Apologies for not remembering. Thank you, October seventeen.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Moving on now to the delegate assembly. So we have two items that we want to talk about here. Um. I want to go through the resolutions first. The, the delegate assembly is uh, NHSBA holds this every year. It's the first time. I, I have not had a chance to go as chair. Shannon is going this year to represent ASV. So this is the first time, I think, in a while that we've sent anybody to this. They have a variety of resolutions that they have proposed by other school districts. Our district didn't have anything that we wanted to submit to NHSBA. So NHSBA has outlined a, a lengthy list of resolutions, thirteen, roughly a dozen or so. Um, some of them are repetitive. Some of them are already continuing resolutions that NHSBA supports. And so our directive tonight, uh, we sent out these resolutions. We need to give Shannon guidance on what to do when she goes on October nineteenth. And essentially we have three choices. We can have her. Vote to support the board's, we can have her vote the board's results of every single one of these items. We can have her vote for or against it. Or as a board, we can decide that, or we can have her abstain from any or all of them.
One more option would be that she could support the NHSBA's recommendation, let each vote, some are no.
Correct, yeah.
Correct, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Um.
And I think that's what we would want to do is have her support the NHSBA's resolution because that is what NHSBA is behind. So if we want her to vote in favor of something, I think that. And if NHSBA is not going to support the original resolution, they've amended it, but I don't know, it does as much good to support the original resolution. Uh, cause generally if they're in favor of something, they're. It, it, it might pass. But for example, one of the school lunch ones, they have added a sentence in there that they want school lunch at no additional cost to the local districts. I don't think anybody's going to go back and support the original one that says they want free lunch. Without any mechanism to avoid it going to local school districts' tasks. So I think if we, we can have her support or vote against the NHSBA recommendations. Uh, and then we can also have her abstain from those. So. I think the best way to do this is to kind of whip through these. Uh, we can touch on, some of these are um, duplicates. I'll mention those as we go through each one. Some of them, there are already different continuing resolutions in place that we don't need to vote on. It's just more informative that there's a recommendation. NHSBA has already said, don't need, we're, we're going to ignore this because we already have these other ones in place that we're supporting as is, they've already passed.
How do I rephrase that? I understand. You're saying that we are only voting on the proposed resolution, we're not voting on the continuing resolution.
Uh, continuing resolution.
To do. So Amy, I'm sorry to rope you into this, but I know you've attended this before. I did call Barrett Christina today just to get some clarification on the mechanics. Like, you know, what if our board doesn't want to take a position on this at all? Can we abstain? He was like, absolutely, you can abstain. Um, but my understanding was you, I'll be voting on the continuing resolutions and the proposed resolutions, correct? Yes, okay. So it, it is both, but some of those are. Are tied together. Like some of, you'll notice some of the proposed are like, well, we already have that as a continuing resolution, but we would, we do have the option. Of supporting or not supporting or just abstaining altogether. And I volunteered because I've just never been and would wanted to learn more about. Uh, about it.
And this will be the twenty twenty-three continuing resolution that were in that. Email.
Yes, yeah, it's a continuing resolutions for twenty twenty-four and they're from October of twenty twenty-three.
Those look really similar to the ones that are in, the proposed. So I was confused about.
Yes, I know.
What the difference might be.
Proposed and then this.
Like the free lunch on both, well, they're continuing and.
Correct. And I think for.
So are we starting with continuing then? Is that what you said?
Yeah, we want to do that. I, I will fully admit that I missed that part of this. So I will uh. I might have as many opinions on those. I would vote that all of the proposed resolutions for this year. I thought the continuing ones were already voted on.
That's what I did.
Same thing.
Yeah.
So. Continuing resolutions, uh, NHSBA supports amending RSA ninety-one A to allow committees to hold meetings without having a forum physically present. For ensuring that full notice and transparency requirements are satisfied. I think a lot of these, I, I don't imagine there's going to be a whole lot of debate. I mean, do we have any issues? With, with that, I mean, supporting that?
Yeah, um.
If you just, you can have.
The wording on that was good. There, there's wording on the other page that didn't say. Any about virtually intended. It just said, you don't need a form anymore.
No, says you don't need a form physically.
That one, the one you're reading on the CR, I support, yeah, CR one wording, twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
I support.
Okay. Anybody, any objections to that? Okay, NHSBA two is uh, supports state federal government seeking.
Are you ready down Shannon? Sorry.
Yes, thank you. It took me a minute to.
So.
If you want to just keep some notes in the background and we can compare, I would appreciate that.
That's fine. So CR two from last year, actually from twenty twenty-two, has two items that they've updated for this year. So those are items fifteen and sixteen this year, Shannon, and it, they've modified it. The recommendation is to. Support school lunches, that uh, free school lunches for everybody where there's no charge to local schools. Uh, I personally am against this.
That's not what's that actually. No cost to students is, is CR two. There's another one.
I, fifteen and sixteen, uh, and the resolutions say that they want to amend it so that there's. Free lunches, but there's no charge to local school districts. So that's the one that I think is the most up to date. I'm against the free lunches across the board because there's no such thing as a free lunch. Whether Amherst takes it out of my pocket or whether the state or whether the feds take it out of somebody's pocket, there's no such thing as a free lunch. And I think this, their Concord's resolution, the way I read it was. Parents don't fill the forms out, well, we can't play to the lowest common denominator in this. If. You have a responsibility as a parent to take care of your kids and if you can't fill out a form, I have problems with the personal responsibility of that. So. That's my personal opinions, but as a chair, I will open up to the board if anybody has other thoughts. If you want to direct Shannon on that one.
Wait a little faster, may I say? What it is and say that it objects. Does Tom object? Then that's enough.
That's fine, we can do that.
I, I joined Tom on the injection on too.
Okay. Anybody else?
And this is on the continuing.
It's, it's free lunches, Terry. They wanted to pursue free lunches with no cost to schools. The local schools.
Right. So like basically speaking, buy the kids lunch. But we, like ASB, ASD would incur the cost.
It's basically what they did during the pandemic where they had the federal funds came in to pay for lunches. They want the state and the federal government to pursue ways to continue those programs.
They can't afford to do it. So it's simply uh. But that's just not well thought of. There's no power to do it. And no child in our district died at a hot lunch. Without any cost at all. So there really don't impact our district. So for our district.
And we can abstain. I mean, again, this is also something that, that we can. Stention is also.
Is there a third now? Does it move on?
Or abstentions to, I mean.
Yeah, I would, I would say that we're probably going to be split and I think we should abstain.
What's your opinion, Jason? Yes or no?
He just said he thinks we should abstain.
Yeah.
So two no's and abstain is a no vote. A no vote? He's a, isn't.
For waiting, I believe so. Am I, am I incorrect?
Say it again.
Isn't an extension. Not as a no?
I judge only, it counts as a vote. So it'd be two and two. Because if you abstain in the SAU weighted voting, it doesn't count as a vote.
Yeah, we fixed it.
Like it's a office full state.
I need Steve here. Hey, David, please, we need you to.
So again, this, I, I, Greg is right. This will take us a, a while to go through all of these um. Trying to go a more efficient way to do it now that we have all the CRs to get in there as well.
Did everyone want to read these ahead of time?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just go through it.
I mean, for the most part, honestly, I generally agree with the NHSBA's rationale on, and I would say ninety-nine percent of what they presented. So, but the way I would go, but there's one that you don't agree with. The, the NHSBA, I've seen school boards in the past, not many school boards take up this conversation. Uh, and so I think your options are for, to, to give Shannon some guidance is. I would say, hey, which ones? Are you going to support the NHSBA's opinion on it? And if there's any that you don't, talk about that one.
There we go.
You know, that, that's what I would do.
Anybody opposed to? Yeah, great. Sorry, I, I faster. Good three, four is, hold on, let's just, yeah, continuing resolution. Four.
That's the firearms.
Yeah, and that also, that also relates to. Uh, which one is it here? Number twenty.
Like the NHSBA has a rationale.
Right.
What can I find it? I, I, I think again. Does any, anybody have objections to four?
Yes.
Okay, Greg has objections, I have objections.
I'm sure Shannon does too, because it gives, uh, it defers local authority over the federal, so I'm sure Shannon also objects.
It is, that's number seventeen, thank you, Jason.
I I'll answer, thank you, Greg, I don't have objections.
Four and seventeen, does anybody else have objections to it? Okay, so Greg and I, I'm opposed to it, because I I think, again, it's. It's a second amendment, you can, whatever you want to say to it, but it's also.
That's kind of my question, what is federal law, federal law is.
Federal law has, no, you can't have guns in schools, open carry or concealed carry, which goes against the legislature, is that really?
Everyone, I mean, some people think federal law says you can't deny someone right to bear arms, so.
No, this is specific to the gun-free zone laws in schools. This is a gun-free zone laws in schools, which the New Hampshire Legislature has put in place. A bill that says we cannot enforce that federal law locally. As part of local control, I think we should be enforcing that, I fully support a gun-free zone law in a school, I see no reason. For anyone to open carry in a school, right now, the only thing we can say is that our students can't bring guns in school, it's like a speed limit, right? People are still going to drive ridiculously like lunatics on the road, but we still have the sign. And we still have the laws and the rules in place to keep people safe, I have.
But they don't. It it doesn't keep people safe, if you're concealed carrying, nobody knows you have it, doesn't keep people safe, all it does is open up another soft target. A school, a gymnasium, knowing that you can't have a gun in there, just makes it another soft target. People that are doing this are not the people that are shooting, doing shootings in schools are not the people that are carrying guns responsibly. I mean, it's, to me, that's my biggest thing, so I vote for an abstention or a no, but, uh, it's a, it's. We we take a vote on how the board wants to support this. Yeah, I'm a no.
No, 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 Jason.
I I supported.
Yes, Shannon, yes, Terry.
So it's four, yes, it's three, yes.
No, no, four, no, no, four, four and seventeen are yes.
Well, well, I mean, how do we want to do it, do we want to abstain from those that are split? What do we want to do?
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'd say we.
So you guys, like I said, I want to go to the meeting. The organ, you know, to learn more.
Four or better, we put a vote in.
I'm fine with that, four, one or better, we put a vote to it, and if it's three, two or less, and we just, we vote, obviously if it's negative. Yeah, so four, four is abstained.
That's the first abstention, but one we had said yes to, number one was the.
I think, um, again.
The virtual meetings are.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's fine.
At school breakfast, I thought that one, that one we said.
We abstained.
We abstained, okay, abstain from school lunches. Local control over curriculum and libraries. I'm fine with having. Uh, I think any law that takes away local control is, uh, should happen because it's contradictory to what the state says. So I support anything that gives more local control for libraries. Uh, it's number six. No, it's number five, and it's also number twenty-three.
Twenty-three proposed.
The way it's number five in the continuing.
Are you only voting on the proposed, how, you know, it's going to go, is there an agenda, I didn't look at the agenda, is there?
Oh, for the delegate assembly there is. All of the ones that were presented in the packet of. So that's where I wondered if it was, I think where we were going initially was. Let's just pull out the ones if there's strong opposition, and then, you know, I almost wonder for the sake of business tonight, if we have ones that we all have. If we're not in sync, if we just say I abstain from those, because this is going to turn into a three-hour meeting at the rate we're going. But, you know, it's up, it's up to you guys, if you guys really want me to go and. Advocate for, for something that you feel strongly about, I don't want to deny the body that opportunity, so I'm just throwing out some.
So I think this is worth talking about, I think. I think I support with Tom, I vote Tom and the NHSBA to not adopt the resolution twenty-three.
Twenty-three of the new.
Is that your first time or the?
Twenty-three is on the new.
And you, you agree with NHSBA, but correct?
In NHSBA says basically, we already have this in five and six.
Yeah, right, five and six already exist, so if anybody is agree with Tom and me on twenty-three.
I would say, right.
I think we all agree.
Jason?
Yeah, I agree with NHSBA's.
Yeah, I'm fine, they're, they're saying we simply want to, we already, we've already addressed this.
That's five, twenty-three. I need a video for this one.
And, okay, so, but, but on the food one.
We're staying, we're abstaining on that.
We were split on both the, or both their original and on.
Firearms and lunches, we're abstaining from.
We're taking a voting, we're not going to stop shooting or eating, we're just going to stop voting.
Uh, any legislation that streamlines credentialing and recruiting, I'm. I I don't have a problem with that, that's fine.
Which number was that?
Seven, seven, streamlining recruiting. On the continuing, yeah.
Do they have a copy in the?
Okay. Seven is by itself, just saying that we want to.
Yeah, I support that. Anyway, I'm all supportive, or they want to oppose it?
Alright, we've all read these, which ones, Greg, which numbers are you vehemently opposed against?
The firearms and the school lunch.
And that's it, that was it. Okay, I am opposed to thirteen and twenty with the. Federal protections on the gender identity, basically, I I don't, I buy support, what is it, twelve oh five, twelve ninety-five, whatever it is, that boys shouldn't be playing in girls' sports. Thirteen and twenty, I am against. And I, and this one, I think Shannon and I discussed this during policy, this is probably one we should abstain from, because right now. Federal language is contradictory to state language, so there's going to be a court battle in there, so I don't think it's anything that the board needs to get involved with.
It's also on one, I believe.
Uh, no, it's not.
Yes, it is, I thought thirteen, sorry. I got you, I got you.
Thirteen and twenty, I think we abstain from because there, the laws in the state are conflicting with the federal Title IX changes anyway, none of that's finalized, so until that is, we shouldn't take a position on it.
I'm okay with that at this time.
Okay, thirteen is abstaining.
Yeah, um. Anybody else?
I have a question about eighteen.
Okay.
Wait, you said thirteen and twenty, Tom, I'm just.
Yeah, thirteen and twenty, abstain, sorry.
Thank you, Greg, for taking notes on this.
I hope you and I match our notes, otherwise we're in big trouble.
Yeah.
I lost video over again. Great, what was your question, Jason?
Uh, I guess maybe not a question. Yeah, number eighteen, I feel good, like I support the NHSBA's rationale. Uh, I know this is another one that's in court. But as.
What is it, Jason?
It's basically, they're trying to make it so that any funds, uh, they want to have them develop. Tax, uh, development funding for constitutionally appropriate education, but they want it to only go to public schools run by local districts. So basically, it takes away anything that the EFA would cover, Tom against that.
Got you, and Jason, you are, are you with Tom or opposed Tom?
Uh, it sounds like I might be opposed to Tom.
Okay, so we have a yes and a no.
Correct.
So any other nos or yeses, I mean.
I'm a yes on that.
I'm a no, so we're good, I guess abstain on that, abstain on that, eighteen.
Uh, nineteen is moved because the state adopted, uh, ED three oh six, so we have nothing to do with nineteen. Twenty-one school impact fees, they just want to review the process of how these get determined every five years.
Wait, hold on, slow down, so. Nineteen, where?
Nineteen is moved, it's, it's, there's nothing to vote for, we should abstain because it's a moot point that.
We already talked about twenty, okay.
Yes. Twenty-one is school impact fees, they want to review the plans every five years to determine how those can be allocated, planning boards will review that, seems to be fine. Uh, risk behavior study, they want to fund that.
Want to support that, are we supporting twenty-one, all of us?
Twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah, and it's just that, they're just going to review how impact fees can be.
Thank you.
It's a fair point, um, risk behavioral study, number twenty-two, they want to fund this for all middle school students. Uh, NHSBA says that you, they don't recommend that because it would make it compulsory.
And not get funded and then it's on the local district.
Yeah, I agree with a no on twenty-two, yeah, correct.
Everyone agree?
Yes. Just go with, just write down what NHSBA does, because I don't know if it's a yes or a no on that one.
Oh, good point, Tom, I want, yeah, okay, I. I've been writing no as if the motion is going to pass, but it may be, do you?
We're in about, we're in about no against that adoption of that one, because the NHSBA does not support it, so we're not supporting either, that'd be a no.
That was twenty-two.
That was twenty-two.
Thank you, because I wrote down, yes, like, yes, I support the NHSBA, but.
Right, right, okay.
Twenty-three is the repeal of laws that restrain local control, we have talked about that, that was a moot point, because five and six take the place of that. Um, twenty-four mandatory reporting for protected classes. I am, uh, I disagree with NH, NHSBA was, they support an alternative language. And NHSBA supports legislation which prioritizes well-being and safety of students, will recognize the rights of parents to make decisions about children, and also gives due consideration in ways to educators' professional judgment. Uh, and their responsibility under the code of ethics, so to me, it's, that's a bunch of eye lunch, it's nothing that has any teeth in it. It's not a policy, it's a suggestion.
Anybody oppose that?
I think we abstain from that. Oppose or abstain.
Abstaining's a board, but the language is written.
Yeah, let me read it, we are on twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah.
I'm okay with their alternate language.
Okay, then we'll just abstain then.
I'm also okay with their alternate language, I think, but I'm still reading it, so give me just a second.
Doesn't matter, it's two, two already, so we're good, we'll abstain. I was opposed, right?
Oh, okay. I'm confused with this, how we're doing this voting.
Yeah, yeah, the whole, you for one, so we have two on a side, and it's done, yeah, I just, I I just, it doesn't, it's perfect, this is easier, actually.
The end.
Three, did we do, I don't think we did three, the continuing resolutions.
I think that's, I think three is perfectly fine, just they approve standards that encompass holistic and comprehensive academic subjects, all the subjects that are being studied now.
Is the controversial stuff in here at all, because I think all it is in the.
History of Holocaust genocide, education, arts, education, world languages, health and educate, health and wellness, physical education, engineering, computer science, personal finance.
I think all it's in RSA ninety-three A already, so.
They weren't, they're continuing, basically, I I guess they're things that carried over from last year.
Well, I wonder why it passed already.
Maybe they just had too many, I I don't know. I mean.
You see there.
If there's something that we didn't talk about, I'm just abstaining.
Yes.
They're oddly abstaining. Then please give us a report when you get back.
Yeah.
I mean, how it works.
Okay. We'll look for you on C span.
Yeah, because we didn't talk about all of the continuing resolutions, we didn't talk about number ten.
And then saying that overall, we were in agreement with the NHSBA's. In general, we agreed with their recommendations.
When in doubt, abstain.
And it was only on the ones where we thought we might not agree with the NHSBA's recommendations that were discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Probably ten. That included the free lunch. Which actually is separate. Right, that's separate from your, your line, right?
Uh, yeah, it's separate, it's not a free lunch, they're just taking better advantage of medical. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Shannon, I was very, I know it was very hectic to go through that, and it threw me off with the continuing ones, so I apologize, I wasn't there.
Thanks for not doing it.
Impact fees, so we need a motion tonight to. Allow the administration to access the remaining fifty-five thousand that we have in impact fees to. Um, engage with DEW for recosting of the school building for this year. Last year, we had a hundred and thirty-five allocated, we voted to spend up to a hundred and thirty-five, that we only spent about eighty thousand last year. Means we have roughly fifty-five thousand left, so we need a motion to. Uh, allow the administration to expend those funds up to the remaining balance, we'll leave it vague. Um, to be able to recost the project, ten meetings, et cetera, for this year. Using, yeah, banwell and DW, I forgot banwell in there, so, can I get a motion to that effect? Jason with the motion, did you get that tonight? Okay, Terry with a second, any conversation points, any questions on this?
Is there any ask for those full costs to do? Recosting? Do we have an estimate, that was aligned in last year for that part of it?
We have some estimates there, uh, I think it's maybe a total between the two of about twenty thousand.
Because they'll be able to do this for not only the Wilkins project, but for anything that we need to do with this building too.
Right, yeah.
So that just. Include the meetings? Yep, and everything, yeah.
How much money is left in the impact fee, about fifty-five, account, this is everything, we drained it tonight if we did this.
We're allowing them to spend at that point, last year we allowed up to a hundred and eighty, a hundred and thirty-five, and they'll spend eight.
So it might be twenty this year.
Yeah. But it gives us flexibility if we have something, you know, they spring another leak in this roof.
I remember that now, okay. I was heading over there, but I remember it, okay, God, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all the vote, all in favor? By four, not against. Moving to number nine, building and grounds nomination, we have two candidates that are, uh, that Greg and I have discussed most in depth. Uh, I, we do thank Anne Baird, who was one of the original applicants, and then we had to reshuffle this because we had two folks leave at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, we had three total applications, Anne was one of them, and we appreciate her willingness to serve. Uh, but tonight, want to just quickly discuss Michael Lane and Aaron Kaplan. Uh, both have been involved in various aspects around the community, so we want to nominate one of those, I talked to Christine Brason, they have eight current members. So there's no way we can take both or take all three, eleven is too big of a committee, and then taking two will leave us again with a even number, so the recommendation is to take one. Um, certainly both have their positives, uh, I won't say have negatives, I'm going to just say they both have their, their positives there, so. Uh, it's up for us, up to us tonight to, um, make a recommendation and a nomination and select one of them and. See if Bill join the building and grounds committee before the next meeting.
A, some of the, can I come up with, so what I think we liked about the candidates issue, you're not aware, is, you know, Aaron's been. Um, very involved in a lot of town matters, especially at the school level, both at Sahegan and this district. And he's helped kind of push topics forward, uh, that they were on the agenda, help get some clarity how things work, and I think he brings a lot of good. Yeah, ideas, well, as demonstrating good passion on, um, this project, and I think he would add a voice that currently is missing. On the board, and, um, Mr. Lane was, uh, very persuasive to me as well, you know. Been involved, uh, and shows a history of getting on people and making, you know, um. Showing kind of, the kind of personality we kind of like to see on a committee, so both, um. Members seem to be qualified their own way, I think. Tom, I didn't really come forward with a similar recommendation, just positives about each, each person, is that fair?
Yeah, I'd say it's exactly fair. Anybody else have any thoughts? Anyone want to make a recommendation or a nomination? Mr. Terry?
I was expecting that you would, that, that you would come to us with a recommendation. And I was fully prepared to accept whatever the two of you had come to. Um, so it's taken me a second to frame this a different way, so forgive me for that, I was, I was. Because same with you, I saw, and and I, I knew that you already had a more extensive conversation. One thing that I would, that I would just like to frame the conversation, since it's now going to be with all five of us. Is to say that the one fear that I always have when. We have people coming and going from, from all sorts of things, is to make it very clear and to set expectations, right? And, and I think that, um. It bears reminding that building and grounds is, is a really essential partner to this board. But they make recommendations to us, they do not, they, they vote on recommendations. But they themselves are only recommending, and they bring those recommendations to us, and then we as a board are the binding vote. And so we can choose to accept and to have our own votes follow those recommendations or not. But it is, we have the responsibility to actually make those votes, and so I just hope that whoever we choose, it is very clear. And that is, and that is explained to, to them, and it's reiterated with that committee, because we had to have a lot of new people on it this year. That the, the roles, because I think the roles matter. And, and I think that it's also important to know that we, uh, we have very specific ask of them, there's not unlimited time. And so we say, hey, here are things that we are taking your expertise from your. Your professions, from your interests, from other things you've done, and we're hoping to draw on those areas of expertise. So that you can help us and guide us in these recommendations, because I promise you, I'm not an. so that you can help us and guide us in these recommendations, because I promise you, I'm not an expert in everything under the sun, and neither is anyone else at this table, right? So we really do appreciate that coming from them, but we're not looking to go and talk about just anything. Those agendas are very specific. We have very specific ask. Like, we are not taking the building project and starting this quarter one simply because we have some new people. We're saying, it is what it is. We've already, as a board, decided we're going forward. However, we would be open to maybe slight modifications. And really, we're looking very much for building and grounds to help us in socializing the plan and getting it out there and giving us new ideas for getting with taxpayers and helping to gain their support. So it's really shifting what we're asking for as to what we've asked for in previous years. So I just want to make sure that no matter who we ask, we make very clear what the committee's role is and what their role would be as a member of that committee.
Yeah, and I, and I think, Terry, they both have had, uh, ample experience with that, and they, they've seen how this works. So I'm, I, I don't, I think I've done this once, maybe in three years as chair, so I'm gonna make the recommendation that we nominate, I'll make a motion to nominate Michael Lane to this Building and Grounds Committee. Michael was on the original list of applicants as well, and was one that we had tossed around and made the final cut, if you will, in that original one. So I think we, um, I'll make the motion to nominate Michael to Building and Grounds to serve as that ninth matter, ninth member. What's that, isn't it? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone.
Yes, thank you to Aaron and thank you to Michael as well for applying. Terry, you okay with my claim?
I, I'm not, I guess I did it personally. I was leaning the other way, but I'm, I'm okay with going this way too.
Okay. All right. Five to nothing, it passes. So we have our ninth member, and again, thank you to Michael and Aaron and to Anne for uh, their willingness to volunteer and serve, and we will get in touch with Michael to let him know, um, when the next meeting is, and connect with Christine Brason. MOU, uh, for the mentoring program. Turn it over to you, Mike.
Yes. So what we're hoping you see in the, in the board report, there is an MOU that we have been, uh, working on with the AEA, and it outlines kind of the ex, the expectation of the extended mentor and the expectations of, of the extended mentee. Uh, this is a pilot program available to all teachers in Amherst School District, and as we kind of talked a little bit about this, we wanted to, you know, respond to respond to the trend and that we noticed during the exit interviews at the end of last year. Uh, you know, some of the teachers who are in the profession, who aren't near retirement, that are, you know, maybe not receiving some of the supports that they were getting. We wanted to have a, a, a way to provide them support during their, their time, as they're new to our district or new to the profession. And so I appreciate the work done by the AEA and, and, uh, and Steve Chamberlain to, to kind of work through this a little bit. And, uh, we like to get a motion to, to accept this MOU and begin this work during this year.
So I will ask for a motion to accept the, um, recommendation for the, except entering into a MOU with the AEA for a second year of this mentor-mentee mentorship program.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jason.
Second.
Second. Terry, any questions?
I think it's a great idea.
Good. My, my only question on this is, do we see this being a long-term?
I think in, in, in the, in the next couple of years, as we, you know, um, continue, because we are hiring quite a bit in, in our school district. And, uh, right now, there is a teacher shortage, so I, I don't, I, I can't say it's gonna be a, a long-term thing for a permanent thing, but I, I do foresee it over the next two or three years, depending on how it works, you know what I mean? And this will be as needed and as determined, you know, through the relationship between teachers and administration on who might, you know, be a good match and candidate for this. So it's not every person. It's, it's depending on your situation and, and, uh, but it is a good tool to have, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good. I mean, we saw, you know, we have a new, Ed, uh, our book was a new technology teacher. She was a second grade teacher, but moving into that new role, she's getting licensure and stuff like that. It's nice to have somebody around who might have content knowledge to help out. Yeah, I mean, the more met going in, the, the better.
Okay. All right, so we'll call the votes. All in favor? By four, none opposed. All right, retirement, Mike.
Yes, uh, in, in, in the packet, you will see, uh, Ms. Sherry Brody has put into retire, um, at the end of uh, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Uh, I'd like to get a motion to approve this retirement. Here's your service and, and, uh, we're grateful, and I think it's probably for us to improve.
It's under fourteen point five.
Yeah, yeah. And that would move her to the veteran salary schedule.
You're saying this on the, the share, what's it called?
Simply.
When was this posted? Just now?
No, we've been in there for a while sometime.
Earlier, okay.
You have to be logged in. I do find to be able to access some of the attachments, Greg, so.
Some way, like I tell it my district, but then I'm not personally logged in, so that's been all. It's, I'm sure.
So I'll take a motion into acceptance of retirement. Uh, I'll take the motion to accept the retirement.
Keep that motion with gratitude to, uh, Ms. Brody for her many years of service.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'll just add, uh, thirty-eight years as an occupational therapist and school-based programs, twenty-eight. Twenty-eight in our SAU, so that is really, really impressive. And, and people know, I, I really admire people put themselves in the arena for that long, and, and they're that committed and devoted to students. And so, uh, it is a great, you know, great gratitude that we accept this, so thank you all.
Amy, do you off the top of your head, do you know how many we have? That's the first one we've had for next year, correct?
That's the first one. Yeah, but it have till November.
Yeah, and we, we have, we're not rolling any over anymore, so we're not rolling over from one year to the next, so that would be the first one, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall any, but.
Yeah, because we, we haven't approved anything since January, so, or maybe we did something in July, but I don't think we did either, so. Um, perfect, thank you. And thank you, uh, to Ms. Brody as well, twenty-eight years in, in this district. By the time she retires, and again, thirty-eight years overall, it's very impressive. Um, all right, superintendent updates.
We did.
We did, uh, do we?
No.
Well, let's vote, all in favor? Five for, I voted. One to nothing today. Five to nothing, yes.
All right, so excellent. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, uh, in its superintendent update. Uh, like I said earlier to Terry, school, the opening of school was really strong. Really pleased with the efforts of the staff and, and the, and the administrators to prepare. Um, we had a great welcome back day. Uh, we're, you know, there was great energy and great vibes in, in the, in the uh, Sahegan auditorium. As people came back, the next day, we had a collaboration day, and that was done a little bit different. Uh, we wanted to, to kind of look at, uh, putting our teachers by departments, by grade levels, you know, K through twelve for parts of the day, and in the afternoon, they had building-based days. We wanted to focus on transitions from buildings to buildings, so there was lots of collaboration being done on that day, and it's a model that it was different and, and, uh, and there's ways to make it better, but, uh, we, it overall, we we got some good feedback, and we're gonna continue to do that as we focus on content areas and transitions between schools. I'll give you an example, like the science department between AMS and Sahegan had a very productive day, and they have yeah, plans to collaborate, doing, you know, kind of instructional rounds together in, in, in buildings to, to work together. So I really felt that was, you know, strong. Um, obviously, we've talked about transportation. Uh, it is the priority right now, and, uh, and I appreciate all all, all involved and, and, uh, who are trying to to navigate this, whether you are a student, whether you are a, a, a parent whose lives have been altered, whether you are, you know, the teachers or kids are getting to just your classes late. I just apologize, um, as sincerely as I can, and, and we are, we are working on this. Um, so once upon a time, I did, and, uh, we, as people know, we have brought on a communications coordinator. Uh, you, you can see the immediate and feel the immediate impact of having someone whose role and responsibility is to, to work on, you know, community outreach, work on social media, work on communications internally and externally. Her name is Katie Gary. Uh, you might see her at, at, at a future SAU meeting or, or out and about. Um, and in fact, she met, uh, the other day with, uh, you know, Shannon Gascón and Victoria Parisi, as they kind of gave her a history of the, of the Wilkins, you know, projects and, and that. And as we start to, you know, make our campaign to, to do that, and, uh, and so that is where I'm at with superintendent's upstate. I appreciate it.
Okay, any questions for Mike? Greg?
Hey, Mike, uh, are those things that were enabled by the vote? We had even the April to put the same project back on the ballot, or is that not affected that? I mean, we had the vote to put the Wilkins project back on the ballot, and I think, and one of the reasons was it will allow your, your team to do certain things it couldn't do if we were to wait until this month to do it.
Yeah, you know, the, the runway, the runway that we got, uh, you know, with that in decision has allowed us to, you know, partner with the PTA. We've had some conversations there. We probably had some conversations with the Amherst Foundation. We have conversations with, you know, others, you know, you know, uh, citizens and, and, and families. We, we took some time to meet with, uh, Qualtrics, because they're involved in then with, uh, you know, some, some of the community outreach work and information gathering work. Uh, we have another meeting with them. Uh, on October second, you're gonna see us being, rolling out, uh, kind of a rebrand of the project in the very near future. Uh, and so this has allowed us to do this, and, uh, I'm, I'm excited for it. And, uh, you will see the superintendent in the SAU a little bit, uh, more involved in the, uh, in the project and, and being at, at more events and controlling some of the campaign, you know, uh, and, and in communication around that. Because we are equipped to do that when, you know, the SAU board allowed us to reorganize and add in a part-time communication coordinator. She works Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and, uh, um, she is, uh, you know, very qualified, has the right skill set to help us, so I'm optimistic.
Give the ability to know what the cost of all the sort of marketing campaign.
No, yeah, we haven't finished that.
What's the date, and then like through the end of the cycle?
Yeah, I, I don't have all the, like, the budget piece for it, but you know, for the, you know, the marketing campaign of the Wilkins pro, project, you, you don't use public dollars.
Okay.
You know?
Okay, good to hear. Cause he, he approved, I think he's on his, uh, what do they call it, Amy? The, uh, the weekly statements, um, invoices, um, that I'm a manifestor. He's seeing things like banners and then, and I don't know what they're for, right?
Well, that's a school swag.
Or regular school business.
That's like for banners for schools, that's banners for the SAU, if you see that.
I figured that, I just wanted to make sure I asked.
Yeah, so my experience with this project or in different projects, um, that have been put forward in the past, the only tax dollars that were used in relation to the projects were things that were, you know, really just straight up informational, which even if these communication pieces are being funded through grant funding, I don't see the SAU putting out anything that's not just purely informational. I don't, I mean, I think, I don't think we can. I think it needs to go through legal. My previous experience was that, you know, things like that would get checked over by our legal department to make sure that we were that the SAU wasn't putting in anything out that wasn't.
It's gonna be purely.
Yeah, it's purely. Vote yes, because
Right.
You know, it's, this is what you're running on. Here is when you vote. You know, here is why, you know, here's why this project's been before. This is a problem it's trying to solve.
Perfect, thank you.
I could be wrong.
I have some other questions.
That's how we operate.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Bring in more, so Terry?
Well, I, I guess I have a follow-on question to that. We, we'd had some specific things that we had asked for, kind of some some single page on some different topics related to it, so that would make it a little easier for us to be able to consolidate some of the, um, recurring.
Yeah, you'll see.
Value adds, and so, and so I just want to make sure that some of those requests made it all the way through to this difference.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, can I just chime in? So, um, the, the meeting that, that I was a part of this week with Katie, and she's fantastic. Great hire. Really excited that she's here, um, was really just to provide her with, um, kind of like some things we've done in the past, so she could see the informational, kind of the information that's been put out there. I was impressed that she came to our meeting. Um, uh, she'd already done a lot of her homework. She has ideas about how to be more clear in our messaging, um, how to communicate. So I, I think that all those things will be addressed. She had, you know, already started working on some brochures and, and flyers and things of that nature. Uh, so from my perspective, yeah, my part of the meeting was just to show her, like, this was the website, this was where the information was, and and things like that, and I would, um, guess that maybe at some point in time, she'll sit down with us or sit down with the Building and Grounds Committee and just kind of lay it all out, what she has it all.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's my follow-up question is, once more of this is prepared, will it come to a future meeting? Will we have a special meeting that's, that's specifically on this topic and see like how we are organizing and engaging to?
Yeah, I, I think what you're gonna see is, you're gonna see us kind of facilitate the conversations between different groups, you know, whether it's this, us and the board, you know, the PTA and, and the board, right? Like, we're gonna be working on, on this work, and really, the purpose of a communications coordinator, when, if you guys recall, as part of the entry plan, is one of the first things that I said we had to, to improve. We had to find you know, a way to, to communicate all the good work that happens in SAU thirty-nine and in Amherst School District. That was absolutely a priority. We had to keep the messaging consistent, and so people knew like the direction that where we were going with our, with the framework, with our goals. And, uh, this person, that, their job is to communicate that out, you know, to, to the, to the, to the community and the families. It's gonna be timely communications about the work that are happening in our buildings, so families are confident that they know, hey, you guys had a building renovation project over the summer. We wanted people to know, so you saw a press release on that. We had Brendan Holt, who, you know, was named the elementary physical, you know, educator of the year, right? And wanted you to know about that. And so, so you're gonna see the work, you know, highlighting and communicating all the good work that people are doing, and that's really the purpose of it. And if we have to get information out around certain topics, like you saw the seventh and eighth grade message that went out today on social media about where we're at with that conversation, so that's just factual informative pieces, and we're gonna continue to do that. The Wilkins project is, is part of that thing, so.
Yeah, so two things to that end, um, I completely like, congratulations to, to Mr. Holt. I'm glad that you, that you said that. I think it's that time of year where there's so much going on in the district, that it's easy to kind of, you know.
I know, it's forgetting something tonight.
The buses are, are sort of looming over all of us right now. We know that you and your team are working really hard to, to try to push the bus company to, to do the right things, you know, to, to remedy that, and so thank you. Um, but congratulations to Mr. Holt, and I also just wanted to, to think in addition to Amy and Roger and the administrative team here at AMS. The, uh, the large phase of the project that we just got done here in this building, the Amherst Building Rounds, the Joint Facilities Advisors. I mean, this has been years in the making, previous boards who, you know, we're, we're putting the capital reserve funding on the ballot. When I was here at Open House last night, um, I was in one of those classes, and the, um, the teacher in that room kept talking on and on to, to the, to the folks in the room about what a difference that space is making for his students this year, for him as a teacher, and, and that was just a really a really nice moment, and I'm just encouraged and excited to continue, uh, moving that work forward throughout the rest of this building. It's, it's, it's time.
Thanks, Shannon. Greg, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I did. Uh, not really into this comment, but, um, we talked about the uh, strategic planning and needing maybe a facilitator or moderator at the SAU meeting. Um, is it appropriate to have a discussion on that now, with superintendent or?
Actually, we're, I, I talked to Mike about that just before we had a chance tonight, so that's gonna be part of the overall conversation with that next week. We're gonna talk about that because that's an SEU-wide project with the strategic planning.
Should we have, I mean, I feel like those meetings are hard for us to have a voice. Do we want to have a discussion now, say like under five minutes, or do you want to just not do that?
I would recommend that you don't.
Okay.
If you didn't plan for it, you don't at other boards.
Yeah, and, and I think.
That's fine.
Yeah, and, and I, and that's why I confirmed with Mike tonight on that, Greg.
Okay. Um, Mike, uh, the, um, the buses, uh, I, I think about things that are complicated, like the complicated systems, and I think one of the goals I try to think about is how fragile is the system? Not necessarily what is, what is the gonna perform on the best day, but sort of if a few things go haywire, what's it gonna do on those days, you know, whatever percentage that's gonna be? And it just seems to me that, um, having the students in middle school on time would be more important than the students at Wilkins. So I think the bus that are on the first run are on time more likely than the ones that are on the second run. So I just wanted to mention to you that it seems like what we're talking about, common start times or all the other discussions we might have next year. Think about some of the robustness of the system, trying to get that anti-fragile is great, but you know, not fragile would be, I think, one of, one of my advisors to, to you, and I would think having middle school start for, always for that reason.